All right, good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Public Schools School Committee meeting of Monday, May 9th, 2022, for 6:00 PM. Please note face coverings and masks are optional in all school buildings until further notice. Regular school committee meetings are videotaped by Oxford Cable Access and broadcast live on the town's public access educational cable channel 194, which is also streamed live on the Town of Oxford website, cable access webpage. Video recordings of regular meetings may also be viewed subsequent to the live broadcast via the town's YouTube channel, which may be accessed from either the Town of Oxford website or the Oxford Public Schools website. Thank you. With this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business is to open the floor for public comment. Comments are limited to topics relating to school business. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address and will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes, although the school committee may hear comments on unanticipated topics. Discussion or action on topics not specifically listed on the agenda will be postponed until a future meeting date. Seeing and hearing no one in the audience, I will close the floor to public comment. And we will turn the meeting over to our student representative, Molly Raymond.
The NHS and NJHS is collecting items for veterans, Inc., in Worcester, which is including new undershirts, underwear, socks, gloves, winter hats, and toiletries for men. The class of 2024 is having a fundraiser at El Patron Corona on May 16th from 4:00 to close. Email Ms. Nugent if you would like a flyer to support. On May 20th is our prom at Sabrina Keys from 6:00 to 11:00, and ticket sales are officially closed. For seniors, the senior week is going to consist of Tuesday being the class trip to the Boston Harbor cruise in Faneuil Hall. Wednesday has graduation rehearsal, a hypnotist cookout, and academic awards night. Thursday has dress rehearsal and yearbook night with dinner. And Friday, the seniors will have one last rehearsal and then the commencement at 6:00 PM. And lastly, the boys and girls track and field teams are hosting swiggle meets next week. Tuesday, May 17th is the boys meet, and the girls meet is on Wednesday, May 18th. So please come support. And that is all.
Thank you, Molly. Any questions for our student representative?
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Next order of business, we do have consent agenda. We do need to approve the meeting minutes of April 25th. We need a motion to do that. People haven't had a chance to review.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Off of the board, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Forbes?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes. I know I wasn't here, but I can still vote.
Yep. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And I watched you.
Five yeses. Your own notice. So next order of business, special presentation, the superintendent's evaluation. So it's been a few years, for sure. It's my third year on the board, and this will be the first evaluation that I've been part of. Just want to thank my fellow members for compiling their evaluations and getting them to me in a timely manner, also to our superintendent for getting us the information, the evidence that we needed. Just want to talk a little bit about the evaluation and then kind of go over some ground rules and what we're going to accomplish tonight. But the summative evaluation is the public evaluation of the superintendent. Superintendent only has one evaluator, the committee as a whole, and therefore only one evaluation. So although we all did one, we compile that into one evaluation. The final evaluation of the superintendent is intended to provide feedback that will help the superintendent know where the committee believes the superintendent has been successful and where improvement may be warranted. To serve the district and the superintendent well, the summative evaluation should provide objective feedback. It should also be limited to the goals and standards agreed upon at the beginning of the cycle and limited to the timeframe of the cycle. So tonight, the superintendent will receive a rating for each goal, and the possible ratings are exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress, or did not meet. The superintendent will also receive a rating on each standard, and the possible ratings for the standards are exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. So the four standards that we evaluate the superintendent on is standard one, which is instructional leadership. The educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Standard two is management and operations, which promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. Standard three, which is family and community engagement, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and the district. And standard four, professional culture, which promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning. So I just want to explain a little bit what exemplary means. It's a level of performance that exceeds the already high standard of proficient, reserved for performance that is of such a high level that it could serve as a model for leaders regionally or statewide. Proficient is performance is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is a rigorous expected level of performance. It is a demanding but attainable level of performance. Needs improvement. Performance that's below the requirements of a standard but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at this time. Improvement is necessary and expected. Unsatisfactory, the rating is merited when performance has not significantly improved following a rating of needs improvement, or performance is consistently below the requirements of a standard and is considered inadequate or both. So the superintendent must be rated on all four standards, and in order to receive an overall rating of proficient, the superintendent must receive a rating of at least proficient on the instructional leadership standard. So what we will do is we rated the superintendent on all four standards, and then we came up with an overall rating based on those four standards. So what I did is I compiled all five of us, all of what we did, and we took the majority of what was rated by the majority of the board, and that's how I came up with it. So what I would like to do, without further ado, is to go over the evaluation. I would say that I will pause at the end of each kind of section, so the goals, the standard, the four standards, and the overall. But at any time within the course of me talking about the evaluation, if you have a comment or a question, feel free to raise your hand, and I can pause, and you can make a comment or ask a question. But certainly looking for any committee members' feedback or anything you might want to expand upon within the evaluation. So step one is to assess progress towards goals. And after we looked at the superintendent's professional practice goals, we rated him as making significant progress. Student learning goals, we rated him as some progress. And then district improvement goals, we rated him as some progress. What I would like to do is just stay with the goals. So I am going to flip to page...
Four, I think.
Four of 12.
Yep, four of 12. Thank you. So the student learning goal will be the first one we'll discuss. The superintendent, really, we focused on standard 1A evaluation, standard 1B instruction, and standard 2A environment. That's what the superintendent gave us for evidence, or gave us evidence regarding. So Mr. Lucas's goal is number one, maintaining momentum during the transition, and goal number five, curriculum instruction were our focus. Based on the evidence provided by Mr. Lucas and our observations, Mrs. Griffin and Mr. Burke rated the goal met. Mrs. Forbes rated the goal significant progress, and Ms. Cook and Mr. Canarquioli rated the goal some progress. So based on that, the student learning goal has made significant progress. In order to meet this goal, more evidence and data will need to be provided. So I will pause on student learning goal. If there's any comments anybody would like to make, in order to the superintendent, you can certainly respond to any thing that you hear. So the professional practice goal, we had a standard two, 2B, human resource management and development. Mr. Lucas's goal, number three, new superintendent induction program were our focus. Based on evidence provided by Mr. Lucas and our observations, Mr. Burke and Mrs. Griffin rated the goal as significant progress, and Mrs. Forbes, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Canarquioli rated the goal as some progress. Based on that, the professional practice goal has made some progress. Being a three-year program, in order to meet this goal, more evidence and data will need to be provided. So I will pause there if anybody has any comments or questions on that. Then district improvement goal, standard 3A engagement. So we combined goal number two, which is effective entry and direction setting and goal setting, and number four, family and community engagement. To make up the district improvement goals, based on the evidence provided by Mr. Lucas and our observations, Mr. Burke rated the goal as met, Mr. Canarquioli rated the goal as significant progress, Ms. Cook and Mrs. Griffin rated the goal some progress, and Mrs. Forbes rated the goal did not meet. Based on that, the district improvement goal has made some progress. This goal most likely will be adjusted next year after the report of entry findings is presented, along with the district improvement plan. But in order to meet this goal, more evidence will need to be provided. So is there any... Yes, Mrs. Forbes?
So I have a comment. When I look at, I rated it did not meet. That is not accurate. I don't know if I made the mistake, or if in the summative eval it was. I would believe that I would be some progress, and I don't know if it's too late for any of that. But if you look back at my community and family engagement, he rated high, and I may have, you know, in error checked the wrong box, because I would definitely not say that that is a did not meet.
Okay.
So my apologies.
Yeah. I mean, it certainly, it won't change.
Right.
If it was some progress, it would still be some progress.
Yep.
I guess I will defer to Helen. Should we make that adjustment?
I can adjust that.
Okay. Thank you. I do apologize again.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That's not how it should have come out.
All right. So I'm going to go back to page one, step two, which is assess performance on standards. And again, I went over the four categories. I'll do it again. Unsatisfactory performance on standard or overall has not significantly improved following a rating of needs improvement, or performance is consistently below the requirements of a standard or overall is considered inadequate or both. Needs improvement slash developing. Performance on a standard or overall is below the requirements of a standard or overall but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at that time. Improvement is necessary and expected. Proficient. Proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is a rigorous expected level of performance. An exemplary, a rating of exemplary indicates that practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. So I'll go over the four standards, our ratings, and then I'll break it down by standard. So standard one, instructional leadership. We rated the superintendent as needs improvement. Standard two, management and operations. Overall, we rated the superintendent as needs improvement. Standard three, family and community engagement. Overall, we rated the superintendent as proficient. And standard four, professional culture. Overall, we rated the superintendent as proficient. And then step three, which is the overall summative performance, based on steps one and two, the ratings. Our overall rating for the superintendent for the 2021-2022 school year is needs improvement. I will come back and discuss the overall evaluator comments, but I would like to go through each standard. So if we go to page seven of seven for me, superintendent's performance rating for standard one, instructional leadership. So curriculum, 1A curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. Rated the superintendent's needs improvement. 1B instruction ensures their practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. Assessment ensures that all principals administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, and understanding and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. Evaluation ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. We rated the superintendent as proficient. 1E, data-informed decision-making. Use multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including district and school assessment results and growth data, to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. And then the overall rating for standard one, instructional leadership, we rated the superintendent needs improvement. Before I jump into the comments section, is there anything that any committee members want to share, ask, or the superintendent? So comments and analysis. So as stated in the superintendent's evaluation rubric, and this is comments for standard one, needs improvement states, and I can't stress this enough, performance that is below the requirements of a standard but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at this time. Coming into a superintendent's role, your first year into a district where there's been lots of leadership changes, you know, this score is something that I hope people understand does not mean that the superintendent is not doing his job. It's not unsatisfactory at this time. There's just a lot of work to do. Mr. Burke's overall rating for standard one was proficient, while Mrs. Griffin, Mrs. Forbes, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Canarquioli's overall rating for standard one was needs improvement. Therefore, Mr. Lucas's overall rating at standard one is needs improvement. So Mr. Burke's comments. He has worked with the administrative team to develop a thorough walkthrough process as seen in the goal five review. Mr. Lucas needs to ensure the process is carried out faithfully, and a clear connection can be seen between the findings and future professional development. As seen in goal number one, Mr. Lucas has done well to complete timely evaluations of the administrative team. Mr. Lucas has also led the team in developing high-quality goals for the coming school year. Overall, Mr. Lucas has begun to demonstrate his ability to guide his administration in developing a solid instructional direction for the district. Anything that you want to add to that, Mr. Burke? Or any questions, Mr. Lucas, you have for Mr. Burke?
No, I guess, no. I guess this being the first time for this process for myself, too, I'm curious as to what we're looking for in this process, I guess, Dave. And I know this is new for you, too, but...
Just transparency, just getting out what everybody put, and then opportunity for people just to add...
Yeah.
...anything they might have forgot or want to elaborate on, and then for the superintendent to obviously talk about anything he wants to in here.
Yeah.
Add some, I don't want to say contest, but if he wants to, you know, provide some feedback to some of what our feedback is, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think it's just important, I guess, for folks to know when we do evaluations like this, and I think we know as, you know, as administrators, that there's some subjectivity to it, and I absolutely respect the ratings that all my colleagues put out there, but I think it'd be good for people to hear why there are differences. I think, you know, especially when we get to some of the ones where we've... I'm glad September cleared up that one where I had said met and she had said not met.
Right.
Clearly, that was a mistake there, but there certainly can be differences.
Yeah, and that's what we can clean up. But I mean, I think, you know, the superintendent, unfortunately, he's the only evaluation in a school district that is public.
And gets five people doing it.
Right. And these are, you know, as a principal myself, these aren't meant to be I got your tools, I mean, I got your things or tools. It's meant to help improve teaching and learning. I mean, really, that's what it's about, conversation style.
Yep.
All right. Mrs. Griffin's comments. Focus indicator, 1B instruction was a priority for Mr. Lucas this year. Mr. Lucas has conducted four of six learning walks to date with his administrative team. Dates of the walkthroughs, and I'll just, the dates are there. I'm going to skip over just some of the stuff. Two additional walks are scheduled for May 6th in 9:322. For all the walkthrough observations, an inclusive practice highlighter was utilized. Twenty-seven inclusive practice standards were listed. The following data was of note. It appears that the inclusive practice highlighter may not have been used during a 4-8 walkthrough. Having learning walks is a positive step to analyzing instructional practices. Oxford Public Schools is in need of specific goals that focus on instructional leadership. The district invested in iStation in 2022. Despite having a curriculum director, no formal plan for the utilization of iStation data has been developed. iStation is not being used with consistency. The evaluator would like to see all stakeholders receive access to istation data. Educators need training throughout the district on formative assessment and data-driven instruction. The evaluator is advocating that all families receive access to student istation data on a quarterly basis and also have access to all student testing data on demand through Power School. To ensure equity in the curriculum and instruction, the district should research the adoption of a consistent LMS. Families should have access to curriculum resources daily through the LMS platform. Again, at any time, just jump in if people have comments. Ms. Cook, I don't think there's a shared vision due to the fact that not everyone seems to be working together at the high school level. Administration guidance don't seem to be working together, and I feel like this negativity affects students. There needs to be more communication and mutual understanding across the board for the success of all students. And I stated, as stated in the superintendent's evaluation rubric, needs improvement states performance that is below the requirement of a standard but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at this time. Improvement is necessary and expected. Proficient language for standard 1A all the way through 1F is a challenging task for a first-year superintendent who comes into any district. That being said, I certainly see progress through evidence Mike provided and my observations in all areas regarding curriculum, instruction, assessment, and data-informed decisions. All areas I rated needs improvement. Please note what I cited above. Improvement is ongoing and necessary, and I fully expect Mike to move standard one, instructional leadership to proficient level next year. So that captures standard one. Superintendent, is there anything that you want to...
Nope. Lot to reflect upon and learn from and grow from. So got to have a growth mindset, just like we want for our students and our staff, and go from there. I've read this multiple times, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Standard two, management and operations. 2A environment develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs. We rated the superintendent proficient. Human resources management development implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practice. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. Scheduling and management information systems uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff. We rated the superintendent proficient. Law, ethics, and policies understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates school committee policies, collective bargain agreements, and ethical guidelines. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. Fiscal systems develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. So the overall rating for standard two, management and operations, the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of the staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. Comments. As stated in the superintendent's evaluation rubric, needs improvement states performance that is below the requirements of a standard but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at this time. Mr. Burke and Mrs. Griffin's rating for standard two was proficient, while Mrs. Forbes, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Canarquioli's overall rating for standard two was needs improvement. Therefore, Mr. Lucas's overall rating in standard two is needs improvement. Mr. Burke's comments. Mr. Lucas has demonstrated strength in the area of management and operations. He's provided evidence of his ability to form relationships with a variety of stakeholders. He's also shown he's willing to listen and respect the thoughts and opinions of those stakeholders, even when he does not always agree with them. Mr. Lucas also has worked with other town agencies for the betterment of the Oxford Public Schools and the Town of Oxford as...
Supposed to be as a whole.
As a whole. This can be seen in his work to finalize in the safety plan with the Oxford Fire and Police Departments. Mr. Lucas has taken his own development as a new superintendent seriously, and as seen in his work with NSIP and in the number of interviews he conducted upon arriving in the district. Mr. Lucas has shown integrity in completing his induction program by meeting or exceeding the requirements of the program. He also demonstrated this quality with his efforts to meet and listen to over 90 individuals from the Oxford district, school district, and community. Mrs. Griffin. Mr. Lucas should be commended for his visibility throughout the district. He has worked tirelessly to present in schools and classrooms throughout the district. Based on evidence titled visits to schools and classrooms, it was noted there were the following number of visits to each school to observe teaching and learning. Oxford High School, 13 visits. Barton, 11 visits. OMS, nine visits. And Chaffee, nine visits. In December, there were three visits per each school that focused on safety procedures with principals. Observations occurred around student arrivals, lunches, and dismissals. In addition to these meetings, there are administrative team meetings with central office administrators and building principals. The assistant principals, food service director, and technology integration specialists and nurse leader, head nurse also attended many of the meetings. Mr. Lucas also made it a point to meet with each member of the central office, admin team weekly, and each principal monthly. This evaluator appreciates the fact that parent surveys were conducted and used for feedback and planning throughout the year. This evaluator has concerns that there have been numerous fights at Oxford High School during the 21-22 school year. Despite the hiring of a dean of discipline, there have been multiple physical altercations among students and physical assaults of faculty members. There also has been extensive vandalism to our school buildings this year. For example, there was a removal of a vanity in one of the bathrooms at OHS and a fire at Clara Barton School. This evaluator would like to see more teacher presence in the halls at OHS. I would also like to see staff create positive relationships with all students. Evidence for 2B, titled interviews and meetings. Mr. Lucas reported that he interviewed approximately 90 individuals. It is wonderful that Mr. Lucas has taken the time to conduct so many interviews. This evaluator is aware that Mr. Lucas is in the process of formulating a vision for the district. There needs to be a vision regarding induction and staff of development, development of staff. Looking forward to seeing a district plan that promotes high quality and effective practice for all. The district did make a very large investment in SEL through the Breathe for Change organization for approximately eight staff at the cost of $18,000. This evaluator is looking for a plan for how this investment will pay dividends for the Oxford Public Schools. Mrs. Forbes prioritized SEL rather than new curriculum and programs, lots of new hires and concern around their training and Mike meeting them all. For time on learning the job, delegating is fine, but year one should be a learning year. Ms. Cook, I think Mike does a great job meeting most of these focus indicators. I wish the hiring and exit of staff was discussed with us more, whether or not it is termination. Mr. Canarquioli, standard 2A environment, I rated needs improvement. Proficient language states develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs of students throughout the district, as evidenced by orderly and efficient student entry, dismissals, meals, class transitions, assemblies, and recess. School and district buildings that are clean, attractive, welcoming, and safe and supportive learning environments for all students. This last sentence I highlighted was one I contemplated and did not feel it should take away from the overall areas of environment, but I do feel it needs to be looked at moving forward in all buildings. Also, there have been plans developed but not sure they all have aligned to the new vision as opposed to the old way. ESR money use, the school choice, to cite a few examples. Another area I rated needs improvement was standard 2E fiscal systems. Proficient language states develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with the district and school-level goals, and available resources. Effectively communicates budget rationale to staff, community members, municipal stakeholders, and the school committee. Provides regular updates on implementation of the budget. I do believe that you are part of developing a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, but would like to see you be more active at communicating that budget to the stakeholders mentioned in the language. Again, it being your first year, there is a learning curve for sure, but moving forward, I would like to see you presenting the budget and the rationalization as to the whys for allocation of money for positions, programs, et cetera. The business manager can be there for support, to support any of the money questions that may arise. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement... Oh, sorry. Yes, Ms. Cook. The business manager can be there for support, to support any of the money questions that may arise. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement. Oh, sorry, yes, Ms. Cook.
Even if I didn't mention it, like if someone else did, are we allowed to make a comment?
Yeah, you can comment.
What they mentioned, there was just like something mentioned there about like behavior at the high school. And I just feel like it's very hard to address fights if administration doesn't know what's happening. Like, I, I mean, obviously, I went to school, so I know, like, there was a lot of fights, but like, if I, like, I feel like students know before staff does, but like, if students don't know there's gonna be a fight, how do you expect the staff to know? So I feel like that's something that happens at every high school, which is like not a huge thing. I don't know, that just like bothers me, because I'm like, oh, fights happen everywhere, but if admin doesn't know, then I don't think it's a, there's a lot you can do to control it. I feel like it stems like outside of school, and then they bring it into school because they see each other, then they can fight here instead of like somewhere else. So I just feel like that was like, I don't know, a lot.
Ms. Forbes, Ms. Forbes?
I also have a comment too that I should have added prior to this. In reflecting on my evaluation, one of the problems, I think, for Mr. Lucas is that we have a lot of fires. And so he has to jump up and go off and deal with different things, which takes away from his ability to learn the job. And I should have put that in writing somewhere in my evaluation, and I feel like it fits well here. So I do want to have that noted, that I, I, I don't want to seem so negative in some of my comments, and I wanted to provide that a lot of this is out of his control and things that need to be attended to immediately, such as the fire at the school. That was days' worth of work for him, that again, take away from the time to be learning or goal-setting or, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Were you able to capture that, Helen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, standard three, family and community engagement.
Hey, if you want me to make a suggestion for you?
Sure.
Maybe to save you a little bit. When you get to the comments, you want each of us to read our own? Take a little ownership of them and save your voice for the night.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that'd be great.
It might be a long night for you, just reading this over and over again.
I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, standard three, family and community engagement. Three-A engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. We rated the superintendent as proficient. Sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. We rated the superintendent proficient. Standard three-C, communication engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. We rated the superintendent proficient. Family concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manager, manage, manner. We rated the superintendent proficient. So our overall rating for standard three, family and community engagement, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools. We rated the superintendent overall as proficient. Mr. Burke, Mrs. Griffin, Mrs. Forbes, and Mr. Canarquioli's rating for standard three was proficient, while Mrs. Cook's rating, Ms. Cook's rating for standard three was needs improvement. Therefore, Mr. Lucas's overall rating for standard three is proficient. And to Mr. Burke's suggestion, thank you so much. I will turn it over to each individual member to read their comments.
All right, so my comments. Evidence for this standard is clearly stated in Mr. Lucas's goal number four, which is also titled family and community engagement. Mr. Lucas should be commended for his efforts in this area as it demonstrates his understanding of the importance of restoring the faith of the community in the Oxford Public Schools through collaboration and transparency.
My comment, Mr. Lucas and his team have worked diligently to ensure that families are regularly surveyed. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Lucas is open to feedback from all community members. It is great to see that our district has invested in a translation service to ensure that families with various languages receive clear communication from the district as well.
My comment, this is one of Mike's strong points. He has made a huge effort to be visible in the community and has met with parents, guardians, staff, students, and school committee members often and as needed.
For my comment, I said there can never be enough family and community engagement. I think he does a great job interacting with the community and the families. Mike can be seen at many schools and our community events often. He is always trying to do his best to make connections with important people in the community. Sometimes I don't think family concerns are always addressed, which I know can be difficult going off of what September said about there's always so many fires that Mike has to put out. But I also wanted to mention, even after I did this evaluation, I had like staff members and coaches say that you were the first superintendent they've ever seen show up at their sporting events. So kudos to you, that made me feel good for them, because, and that probably made them feel good too, that their coaching and efforts aren't going unnoticed, that you're the first person to show up for their kids and for them.
You try to support everybody, and if they're involved with our kids, it's important.
Yeah, that like, I don't know, it gave me like goosebumps when they said that, because I was like, oh, that makes me feel good that people are supporting them and that you're supporting them.
Absolutely, we're all on the same team, so, good stuff, it's good work.
My comments, proficient language for standard three-C communication states, engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. That is provided in multiple formats and reflects understanding of and respect for different families, home languages, culture, and values. Based on evidence provided and my observation, Mike's done a great job overall communicating and being visible in the district. Moving forward, more of a focus on communication to families regarding student learning and performance would be something I would ask to be considered. Proficient language for standard three-B, sharing responsibility states, monitors adherence to district-wide policies and practices that promote continuous collaboration with families to support student learning and development both at home and school, as evidenced by the collaborative identification of each student's academic, social, emotional, behavioral needs, and connecting families to the necessary resources and services within the school and the community to meet the standard's learning needs. I rated this as needs improvement as this work has been started, but do feel more work needs to be done moving forward in Mike's second year. So it's just about the communication of, you know, issues around academics. I think that's been clearly noted on this board, and I don't think it's all the superintendent's responsibility. I think that's the collaboration of his administrative team that needs to work with him on that. But it certainly starts with Mike's vision and leading that step. So rating for standard four, which is professional culture. Standard four-A, commitment to high standards fosters a shared, shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching and learning with high expectations for achievement for all. We rated the superintendent as needs improvement. Cultural proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. We rated the superintendent proficient. One, standard four-C, communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. We rated the superintendent proficient. Standard four-D, continuous learning develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Model these behaviors in, in his or her own practice. We rated the superintendent needs improvement. In shared vision, successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and became, become a responsible citizen and a global contributor. We rated the superintendent proficient. And standard four-F, managing conflict. Employees strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict and building consensus. Throughout the district of school commi, community, we rated the superintendent needs improvement. So as overall rating for standard four, professional culture, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by nurturing, sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectation, and continuous learning for staff. We rated the superintendent as proficient. Mr. Burke, Mrs. Griffin, and Mr. Canarquioli's rating for standard four was proficient, while Mrs. Forbes and Ms. Cook's ratings for standard four was needs improvement. Therefore, Mr. Lucas's overall rating for standard four is proficient. And I'll turn it over to my fellow members for their comments.
Okay, so I had written, Mr. Lucas has demonstrated proficiency in this area. He has led the administration and staff of Oxford Public Schools in studying equity and inclusive practices. Mr. Lucas has worked with his team to complete a book study on equity and trauma and has challenged his administrative team to reflect on their own personal bias. Mr. Lucas has also provided professional development for all staff on this topic. Mr. Lucas is focused on communication during his initial year. He has provided evidence of professional emails he has written in communicating with his administrative team. Mr. Lucas is a, has used several appropriate avenues to spread news of events in Oxford Public Schools, including email and text blasts, Twitter and Facebook posts, and flyers. Perhaps one of his best attributes is his visibility. He has made an effort to attend a myriad of events in town. These have included non-school-related events in order to make himself available to a wider audience. Mr. Lucas has stated that accessibility to the community is important to him, and he has shown this to be true in his actions.
My comments, it's clear that Mr. Lucas is working hard to coach and support his admin team. Mr. Lucas has led his admin team in valuable work around equity and trauma enforced education. This evaluator would like to see increased work in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year around standard five-D, continuous learning. I'd like to see all educators in the district receive training around common initiatives. For example, the mathematical practice standards for grades K through twelve. It'd be terrific to see all educators read and discuss books such as Limitless Mind by Joe Bowler. Students need to develop a positive growth mindset and see mathematical errors as an opportunity for growth. Mathematical errors should be expected, inspected, and respected. Students need to receive direct instruction around conceptual understanding of concepts and not just rote applications of algorithms. All educators are teachers of literacy. Students need to learn how to write about their mathematical reasoning in order to defend and explain their thinking. I'd love to see all educators use formative assessment data to drive instruction and prove outcomes for all students. Let's see. There needs to be more opportunities for all learners to grow. Often, there is an emphasis on struggling learners, and those who are excels, who are, who excel are left to their own devices. Seeing IStation data emerge that illustrates a recession in mathematical understanding in numerous grades is troubling and alarming. I question the value of the wind block at Oxford Middle School for all students. There needs to be a clear plan in place that fosters differentiated instruction in all classrooms. Students need to be inspired to believe in themselves and to love learning. Unfortunately, not all students in the Oxford Public Schools are inspired to put forth their best effort. It appears that some students are left in a holding pattern and not pushed to excel. We have a culture where several students are becoming disengaged in learning. In order for this to change, all students need to all have a sense of belonging and differentiated instruction must consistently occur. I believe that Mr. Lucas understands this fact, and I look forward to seeing Mr. Lucas cultivate a shared vision for the Oxford Public Schools that ensures academic growth and a strong sense of belonging for all.
My comments, work on high standards before making changes. Work on OHS more closely to ensure that we get more out of everyone, staff, students, and administration.
My comment was, I think Mike does a great job keeping everything professional. I just think that building admins need to be evaluated more and checked up on. Complaints of building administration should be investigated more. But I think Mike has done a great job with communicating information to parents and getting plenty of solid feedback regarding the school district.
My comments, proficient language for standard four, managing conflict. Employees strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout the district and school communities while maintaining a commitment to decisions that are in the best interest of all students. I rated this as needs improvement, as there were issues prior to Mike's arrival and not sure if managing conflict is at a proficient level yet, although I do know he's working on that. Proficient language for standard four, shared vision, continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of or commitment to a shared educational vision focused on student preparation for college and career readiness, civic engagement, community contributions, and responsible citizenship. Based on the evidence provided by Mike and my observations, this area is proficient, and the needed change to this focus has started and is moving. And I know I didn't write that yet, but I'm looking forward to Mike continuing to move that forward. And then back to the beginning, step four, this is the evaluator's overall comments. For the final rating of needs improvement, so our overall summative rating for the superintendent is needs improvement. The evaluation of the superintendent is intended to provide feedback that will help the superintendent know where the committee believes the superintendent has been successful and where improvement may be warranted. Completing the evaluation of the superintendent lets the community know that the school committee is fulfilling one of its most important responsibilities and is monitoring and evaluating progress of both the superintendent and the district. That being said, the overall ratings are as follows. Mr. Burke's overall rating was proficient. Mrs. Griffin's overall rating for the superintendent was needs improvement. Mrs. Forbes' overall rating for the superintendent was needs improvement. Ms. Cook's overall rating for the superintendent was needs improvement. And my overall rating for the superintendent was needs improvement for an overall rating of needs improvement for superintendent, Mr. Mike Lucas, for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. We would like to note, as stated in the superintendent's evaluation rubric, Needs Improvement states, "Performance that is below the requirements of a standard but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at this time." We would also like to note, stated as well in the superintendent's evaluation rubric, Proficient states, "Performance is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is a rigorous expected level of performance. It is a demanding but attainable level of performance. In order to receive an overall rating of proficient, the superintendent must receive a rating of at least proficient on instructional leadership." That being said, below are some comments from the individual members, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Overall, Mr. Lucas has had a successful first year as the superintendent of Oxford Public Schools. He has begun the process of creating transparency with the community and rebuilding trust. Mr. Lucas has been able to build relationships and seek feedback from a variety of stakeholders and has shown that he is willing to listen to new ideas and criticisms and work for solutions that benefit our students. Mr. Lucas should also be commended for his visibility in the community. He has received a lot of praise from community members about the number of events he attends and his availability to speak with families and community members at these events. Finally, Mr. Lucas has begun the process of reviewing current data and practices, and I'm eager to see how he and his team work to improve course offerings and increase rigor in our schools.
My comments, I appreciate the evidence that Mr. Lucas submitted for his evaluation. I'm looking forward to the shared educational vision Mr. Lucas will be developing with all stakeholders. Mr. Lucas was certainly present to staff, students, families through the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two school year. It is evident that Mr. Lucas is looking to enhance learning opportunities for all students in the Oxford Public Schools. This is apparent due to the approximately ninety individual interviews to understand the past management and operations of the Oxford Public Schools. Mr. Lucas has proposed the reallocation, sorry, relocation of the eighth grade back to Oxford Middle School. He's also proposed three new career paths, fire science, certified nursing assistant, and early education slash childcare program. It's exciting to see so many positive changes for the Oxford Public Schools.
My comment is, I know that the superintendent's first year is all about learning, training, and engaging. Mike has done great with community engagement and his Massachusetts Association of School Committee Training and Mentor Program. I think he needs to do more watching and learning from employees at OXPS, learn the how-tos of budgets and contracts. Mike has implemented changes in course offerings at OHS prior to getting it under control. Spending is concerning, too, moving budget funds to cover some spending. Learning from people who know how it works, how it's done, and what needs changing.
My comment was, Mike has done a great job interacting with the community and trying to engage all and be inclusive of everyone. I think that admin and teachers need more support and guidance when it comes to leading and instruction. I think being more transparent about information, school happenings would be best, and the schools need to be displayed in a more positive light and showcase the good things that the school produces. I know it's hard to get rid of negative media when it comes around, but this completely isn't helping the district.
And I just, I cited a couple of highlights. Standard two-C, scheduling and management information system. Proficient language states, "Uses systems to ensure optimal use of time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, as evidenced by school schedules that maximize student access to quality instruction and minimize school day disruptions and regular opportunities for administrators to collaborate. The creating of a more structured schedule at the elementary level was needed and done under Mike's leadership, which was a very, very positive thing. Standard three-A, engagement, proficient language states, promotes monitors and supports comprehensive, culturally responsive, and collaborative engagement practices that welcome and encourage every family to actively participate in the classroom and school community and engages community stakeholders to contribute to the classroom, school, and community's effectiveness. Mike's visibility has been a tremendous plus for the district in creating, creating relationships with all stakeholders early and often. Nice job. A few areas of self-reflective, a few self-reflective areas. Proficient language for standards one through F is a challenging task, as I mentioned earlier, for a first-year superintendent. Comes into any district. That being said, I certainly see progress through evidence Mike provided and my observations in all areas regarding curriculum instruction, assessment, and data-informed decisions, but all areas I rated needs improvement. Please note, improvement is ongoing and necessary, and I fully expect Mike to move. Standard one, instructional lead- Standard one, instructional leadership to the professional level next year, kind of repetitive of what I said earlier. Standard one B, standard one B instruction, proficient language, monitors and supports, principals and instructional staff throughout, observations and feedback to ensure that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, and understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. The learning walks and administration establishing common language and trends was a good start. Looking forward to seeing and hearing the plan moving forward. I know we've done those past, I was part of that. There's great stuff that comes out of that, but I have confidence that Mike is going to take that to the next level, because we never did that in the past. Standard one D, data-informed decision-making, proficient language states use multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data to inform district goals and improve organizational performance, educated effectiveness in student learning, regularly monitors and shares progress with the community, supports principals to align school improvement goals to district plans and goal, plans and goals. This is and has been an issue for years in Oxford and in education in general. More parent guardian involvement is needed, as schools can't do it alone. Also, using data to assist in the creation of the district improvement plan will be necessary. And I know I didn't write this here, but I definitely look forward to the end-of-the-year plan and then the vision for the school improvement, the district improvement plan moving forward. And then I've already talked about the self-reflection on just being more visible with the budget and the presentation of the budget. So I won't read that one again. As stated above, Mike's overall rating is needs improvement. In order to improve this rating, it's encouraged to continue to use the superintendent rubric as a working document to drive your leadership. As a committee, we have provided feedback for self-reflection, and as you head into year two on the job and in your induction program, we are confident that growth of you as a leader and growth within our district will continue. Thanks for all your efforts during this ever-changing and extremely challenging year. Respectfully, the Oxford School Committee. Quite a lot. Is there any final comments from any of the board members?
Absolutely.
Yes, Mrs. Forbes.
So I sound so negative. I just want to reinforce that I have confidence in the choice that we made for superintendent. This is a really difficult job. I worry that he may have lost faith in us sometimes because our district has been very challenging. As you said historically, Dave, not even just since Mike's been here. This is a huge role, transition role, for him, being a principal for so long and moving into a role that's pretty much completely the opposite. Professional culture is a long process, and it's person by person, baby steps in moving along towards that marathon. So this sounds negative again, but I didn't really expect a super-high rating because it's a very difficult job, and this is a very in-depth evaluation, and all points need to be considered. But I just want to reinforce that I have not lost faith in our choice, and I think that going forward, Mike will do a great job in moving forward with what he's already started doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Any other members, Mrs. Griffin?
You know, I love to talk, and I can't help myself sometimes. I think the world of Mr. Lucas. I think he's an amazing asset to our community. He's moving the needle for Oxford Public Schools. He's got a lot of creativity and vision, and he has brought us a lot of excitement, and I feel rejuvenated as far as where we're going. That said, it's, this is a job that I don't know how anybody would want to do it. It's one of those thankless jobs, just like being a teacher sometimes and/or an administrator. You know, being in education is extremely challenging, now more than ever. And the fact that we have Mr. Lucas taking that leap of faith and making himself available to the Oxford Public Schools is very commendable. And I really, really appreciate the fact that I think everybody has brought their concerns to the table and not just kind of brushed over some things that might be concerning us. That I feel like as a board, we've made great growth because we're not just saying, hey, everything looks great. In the past, I gotta say, when I first started, that wasn't the way. And when I watched these meetings before I joined this committee, for years, it just kind of seemed like everybody was like, this is great, let's be cheerleaders. But the real growth comes with the reflection. It comes with seeing what we need to do to be better. And I think as educators and administrators and people involved in education, those that consistently reflect have the greatest impact for the future of their students because they're always growing. They're never just resting on their past success. They're always looking for the future and the vision. And one thing I said to Mr. Lucas is, we have to have hope, we have to be a community of hope. You know, we're seeing things, which I think is great, we're seeing things that we can improve. There's nothing wrong with that. That's a wonderful thing. It's hard, though, and I think there's so much to kind of look at right now because we're, there's so much transition and there's so much we've gone through. You know, when we, I know I commented on the behaviors at the high school and to Mrs. Cook's point, Ms. Cook's point, very well taken. You can't necessarily control everything that's going to walk through the door. We don't know what our students are going to bring to us. We don't know what's going on in their lives. And, you know, no fault to specific people per se about the behaviors that have happened. It just shows that we need to rally around our kids more. It shows how vulnerable they are. It shows that we need to continue to cultivate personal relationships with them, which Mr. Lucas does so well with, with all of us and the administrators and the teachers. He's making all those relationships, he's a great model. So there's, there's a lot. And I, again, I'm a big data person, and that's just my lens, being math-focused. I can't help it. I like concrete visual data, so I probably harped a lot on that. But I think formative assessment is a big thing. When you're constantly looking at your students and how they're growing and parents are informed with results, then they know either if the child is making the grade or making the target expected growth or not. And I think that's, again, where we can improve outcomes for our students when everybody understands their strengths, their weaknesses, what they have to work on. And it's difficult, it's difficult to be a reflective person. It's difficult to hear lots of feedback, and I think Mr. Lucas has done very well with listening to all of our concerns. So, and I'm, again, I really appreciate all you're doing. It's not easy.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Cook.
I just want to go off of like what Val said, like some things seemed like a little negative, but I feel like we should focus on the positives. And this sounds bad, but I'm envious of the students that get to have Mr. Lucas as a superintendent because I wasn't able to have you as a superintendent, and I knew you when you were the principal of Tantascua, and I would see you at the student council events, and I'm like, wow, what a great principal they have. And like, I don't know, I just thought it was a great thing that they had you to support them. And I think that the students should be fortunate to have someone that supports them and cares about their education and also cares about them on a personal level, too, and things like their sporting events and their student council events, like, which they haven't always had in the past. So I think that's something to be proud of. So I appreciate your continued efforts always.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Anything else from the members?
Yeah, I'll just add, Mike, I think we heard a lot tonight about the state of Oxford Public Schools when you walked in. I want to be careful to say that we do have a lot of great people here, and I think you've met those great people.
Agreed.
They are working hard and willing to work with you. I think, like I said earlier, we all take a different lens when we do evaluation like this. To me, it was not about the current state of the Oxford Public Schools because I think there's work to be done. It was about the steps that you've taken to take on some of those challenges, and I think you've done a great job with that and should be commended for that. And I think we're, you're hearing that from the members now that we're impressed with your first year and looking forward to moving forward with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Anything from you, superintendent?
Yeah, I want to thank the committee for taking the time for the feedback. I know it takes, takes a while to fill out those forms. It's been, as you've noted, a lot of complex challenges this year and a lot of fires to put out, literally, figuratively, in transitioning a lot this year with the S R program and everything for going back to last summer when I came in. But I'm glad you did recognize the good things happening and the good, hard work that our administration team and our teachers are currently doing. People are working, Mr. Burke, as you just recognized, very, very hard, and really doing a great job connecting with students on many different levels. And there's a lot of good stuff happening here. And there's areas for growth, and education's all about lifelong learning and continuous learning and having a growth mindset that when we make mistakes or don't do something perfectly, we learn from it and try again and advance forward. And I've always believed that as an educator and as a learner. So you guys have given me a lot to reflect on, which I will, with myself and my administration team, and we'll just keep moving forward and trying to do the best we can for the students of Oxford, and we'll go from there, so.
All right.
Keep working hard.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. We will just stick with you, Central Office Superintendent of Schools report. Do you have a personnel update for us?
I do have a personnel update for you. The Search Committee for the Special Education and Student Services Director has met several times last week and completed interviews and has sent a final candidate to the superintendent for final interview this week. If all goes well, I will bring forward that candidate to you for appointment per policy GCEB at our next meeting. The Search Committee for Building Principal at the high school has been formed. We'll meet later this week to start planning our sessions and our timeline and start reviewing applications this weekend. We have seventeen applications for high school principals so far, which is encouraging. So that, that, I can update that you again at our next meeting on that. I have a couple other quick updates, if that's okay.
Sure.
Update on full-day preschool in speaking with Mrs. Miller again today, our interim. We appear to have enough commitments at this time to move forward again with full-day preschool. We are now waiting deposits from peer model families. Our next step is to look for furniture, about what we have. We may be soliciting some donations from the community. If we do in fact need those, I'll send out a message to the community on furniture for our, for our little kids for preschool. But we're going to put a hold on that for now, we're going to see what we can rally and coordinate from first before we purchase anything. Then the last thing, I know the next date in Accountability Subcommittee meeting has been set for June seventh, where we'll review all of our year-end data. Beginning of June, we will also be sending home some, a DIBELS report for grades K through four. This report will have the child's cumulative information on one side of the form and then activities on the other side that students can do over the summer with their families. For grades K through seven, we'll be sending home an email with information on how parents can sign into iStation. We've worked that out finally, and we should have that ready to roll out in June to see their children's cumulative scores from the year in istation. So those are, I know those are things we've talked about as a committee, and I wanted to update you on those. Of course, a lot of that data we'll have, we'll share out at the Data Accountability Meeting, and then we can share here at a meeting, too, and we're going to share that with parents. And that's all I have for updates right now. I just wanted to quickly congratulate the baseball team, went to the Hall of Fame trip this weekend. I think half the town of Oxford went also with them.
Pretty much.
But they were down five-one, beat a very competitive New York team, and seemed to have a great, I checked in with the coach today, and they had a great trip. Kids were well behaved, played some great baseball, it seemed like a great experience for everybody. He wanted to express to you guys, thank you for allowing them to go and attend. It was a great experience for the kids, so thank you very much.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent regarding his report?
Just a comment, if I may. I'm thrilled to hear that the iStation data is coming home to folks in June. That's really, I know it's a lot of work to organize that and get that set up, and that means a lot to me to see that data, and I'm sure it's going to mean a lot to our families and then moving forward. You know, cumulative, are they going to be able to access it all the time?
Yeah, that's the idea.
So that's great. Thank you for making that happen.
And it sounds like we'll be able to just do it with an email and a connect, so we've got a good grasp on it.
That's awesome.
We should be ready to roll it out in June.
Thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, Policy Subcommittee, any updates, Mrs. Griffin?
We did a lot of work, and I had to bow out towards the end of the meeting, and as you know, you were, I passed the baton to you.
Did you?
I think so.
Thought we, no, I think we closed it.
I think I left. Mentally, I feel like I left. My family's all been sick, full disclosure. So I do think I bowed out towards the end. I don't, maybe we closed it, I don't remember honestly, Mr. Canocchio, I apologize to everybody out there. But we've been working on a lot of policies, and we did speak about technology and having some new technology policies that are in the works that are coming, and we should have those.
We'll probably have a few to come forward next meeting.
I think so, the next meeting.
Four.
Four, yeah, and those are all centered, I believe, around technology.
Internet, social media.
There are three technology, one of them you actually voted the last meeting, it came through, the last policy meeting. So there are three new technology and one that you're removing from the manual.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I don't recall that, so maybe I bowed out at that point.
I'm pretty sure you were there, I'll have to review.
Well, I thank God for Helen. I know. Mike, thank God for Mike.
We're missing Val. Val, you're going to come back from South Carolina. All right, thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Personnel and Negotiation Subcommittee, Mr. Burke?
Sure, we are still waiting on a vote, correct, Helen, from the clerical unit on a tentative agreement that we've reached with them. So hopefully, we'll have something to present to you at a future meeting. And negotiations with OEA are ongoing.
Thank you, sir. School Buildings and Safety Subcommittee, Ms. Cook, nothing from us, correct? I like the beginning of the year grouping, I think that's a kind of phase, maybe we're going to look at that next year. District Accountability and Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Griffin and Mr. Burke?
Meeting again June seventh.
June seventh, okay. And Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Subcommittee, Mrs. Forbes and Mrs., haven't had a meeting since then.
We meet on May eleventh, which is Wednesday this week. We welcome anyone to come, six o'clock right here at OHS Community Room, please.
Excellent, thank you. We do have a warrant report from Mrs. Griffin.
I have a payroll warrant that I signed for April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two for six hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred four dollars and seven cents. An accounts payable warrant for May third, twenty-twenty-two, for a hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred one dollars and three cents. And an accounts payable warrant dated May tenth, twenty-twenty-two, for forty-five thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, and that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Final public comment, I do not see anybody in the audience, but I will open the floor up for final public comment. Seeing nobody, I will close the floor for final public comment. And I did skip members forums, so I apologize for that, let me backtrack. Ms. Cook?
No, I think I've said enough today.
Forbes, yes.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Molly for being our student council rep and bringing us all of that great information all year and to wish you the best of luck next year, whatever you're doing with your future. And also, thank you to Mike, too, for all the work that you're doing, but for sitting here and taking it. So it's definitely not easy to hear all those things, and I'm, I look forward to what our future holds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes, Mrs. Griffin.
And again, I'm very grateful to our superintendent and to everybody that works in Oxford Public Schools. It's, again, this, these are unprecedented times, not easy to be an educator, to work in education, period. And our kids need a lot, and I'm excited to see the future. I think we're going in positive places, we're making great growth, so thanks to the leadership again, Mike.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin, Mr. Burke?
I think we've talked a lot about transparency and what Mike is working to bring to the district, and I would just want to thank all of you. I think this, I know how much time it takes to do these evaluations. I liked the process tonight and us being very transparent with the public, so hopefully, people are paying attention and seeing that we're all working for the same goal here.
Thank you. I missed it at the beginning, Molly, is this your last meeting official, or are you coming for one more?
One more.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll give you your official goodbye.
She's bringing her newbie, though.
It's all right, we can still say, we can still say goodbye.
All right, two weeks early.
So just real quick, you know, the, just so people are aware, I mean, the evaluation process is, again, it's a, it's a tool that's designed to highlight the great things that are going on, but also provide that feedback. And for somebody who's done it for so many years now, I know it can be a little uneasy when you have to provide that feedback that's not always positive. And, you know, Mike knows that side of it, and I think what I really value about this process is we have a great relationship on this board and with the superintendent. And I think, you know, Mike's been in education over twenty years, and this is the first time he's ever had to have a valuation in public, so I know it's not easy. But I know he's got the personality and the mindset that he's going to reflect on this. I have faith personally that he's going to take this constructive feedback. It's not easy because it's the first time he's had to deal with it, but I know he's going to take it and move forward with it. And I think our job is just to continue to advocate for what's in the best interest of this district, and ultimately, his leadership at this point is the best interest of our district. And I think overall, we are satisfied. And again, I can't stress enough to the public And again, I can't stress enough to the public that needs improvement does not mean he's not doing a good job. Needs improvement, first-year superintendent in a district that's had multiple superintendents, multiple principals, multiple changeover, a pandemic, like a lot of things mixed in, it's a great start, in my opinion, and I just look forward to year two, because I think this is the year that we're really going to take off. So thank you for that, Mike. I know he's got thick skin, and he's going to be okay with that. And what we're looking for is consistency. We haven't had consistency in this district, consistent leadership from up top, and I think that's what we're starting to build, so we're going to move forward. I just want to kind of comment on a situation that happened towards the end of town meeting last week, where I got up and spoke. There was a petition brought forward by a group in town about public comment was really my, my driver of my conversation. And I would like to speak directly to the town moderator, town council, and any other committees that were up there. I understand that the open meeting law does not give the public a right to participate or comment during any of the open meetings. As a matter of practice, however, the public bodies often allow members of the public to comment during public meetings. So it was really late, it was like ten-twenty that night, so I want to make sure I'm clear about what I was trying to say that night. For a town that has right, wrong, or indifferent trust in transparency issues among some of its residents, I am not sure why every committee and every board in this town does not want to provide an opportunity for the public to speak. And I get it, doesn't give, open meeting law does not give the public the right to speak. They don't have to, but to me, every board should allow it. I'm looking at an agenda from a town selectman's meeting of April twelfth. They have the agenda, and it's all the way A, all the way down to Q, and there is no public comment listed on there. So they told me in public, town council, the moderator, that people can speak, but when? When do they get a chance to speak? Why can't agenda A, call to order, B, pledge of allegiance, C, public comment? That's what it should be. Then have your agenda. I would ask any of the committee members, any boards, any committees, the town manager, go to oxpss.org, check out our agendas. You'll see, B, the second order of business is public comment for us, and we clearly stayed in there, what's allowed, what's not allowed, but at least we're giving people an opportunity. We would love to see the room filled. We would love it. We want feedback, but I'm just not sure why our boards, our committees, don't want to be transparent, don't want to hear the voices of the citizens who have elected you. It just, it just, in this day and age, I've been a leader for a lot of years, and it just boggles my mind that leaders, people who've been voted into these leadership positions don't want to hear from the public. So I'm challenging and asking all of our committees, just put it on your agenda. Put it right at the beginning of your agenda. Allow people to speak. That's what this is all about, right? They should be able to speak. And I will get off my high horse at this point. Thank you very much. Future business, any topics for future agendas, please get to me by the middle of next week. No, yeah, end of next week, I think. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, May twenty-third, twenty-two, and at this point, we are going to go into executive session. So pursuant to MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, three, the committee will enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the OEA and the Oxford Clerical Workers Unit, as is necessary to protect the position of the public body. The committee will exit executive session and adjourn the public meeting without conducting any further business. We do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.